Hmm. Not working. Is yours working? No.
Tonight's board meeting will begin in ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four.
Good evening. The regular school board meeting for December 8th, 2015 is now in session. Pam, roll call please. Nope, there's, I wasn't looking. Ah, there we go. I got, I got the meeting.
Mr. Craig?
Present.
Mrs. Belford?
Present.
Mr. Ziegler?
Here.
Mrs. Neese?
Here.
And Mrs. Henderson?
Here.
This evening, we have two students from Capeview Elementary School to assist us in the opening exercises. Jasmine Hollers, fifth grade, will present the invocation. And Miles Dackar Jimenez, sixth grade, will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Jasmine, invocation.
A children's prayer by Dr. Seuss. From here on earth, from my small place, I ask of you way out in space, please tell all men in every land what you and I both understand. Please tell all men that peace is good. That's all that need be understood. In every world, in your great sky, we understand both you and I.
Very good. Thank you. And Miles, you'd lead us in the pledge?
Please stand up. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, if you all stay up there, I've got some questions for you. We'll start with you, Miles. If you could tell us a little bit about yourself.
My name is Miles. I'm 12 years old. I'm in sixth grade. I really like music. I really like PE. I enjoy everything at my school. I have a pet cat and a pet bird.
Wow, that's real good. That saves me a lot of questions. So what do you like, what do you like about PE? What's your favorite thing to do?
I like kickball.
Kickball. I always liked kickball. And should we, do you have enough PE?
No.
No? All right. All right, so we need more PE. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. And do you have any family members here with you?
I have my little brother Neil, who's in the chorus, right there.
Hey Neil. Anybody else?
No.
All right. Well, we're all a big family here, so we're all here for you. I appreciate you being up there. So tell me, if there was anything that you could change at your school, what would you change? Other than PE, we know about PE.
I would probably change drumming to every day after school.
Drumming every day. Is that, very good. Well, you're setting the bar high for everybody else. You know that, right? And that's perfectly okay. And what about, what is it that you like most about your school?
I like music most.
So more music and more PE? I think that'll work. All right. Excellent. Very good. Well, thank you very much for joining us. And if we would let Jasmine come up and tell us a little bit about herself.
Okay, well, my name is Jasmine. I've been at my school for seven years. I am in the fifth grade. I have a cat and I love music at my school.
Excellent. Excellent. Now, I see here that your cat is 14 years old.
Yes.
So slightly older than you, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so has the cat been in the family ever since you've been born? Or did you adopt the cat?
Before we were born.
All right.
Before I was born.
So pretty much your best friend then?
Yeah.
All right. So you got any secrets about your best friend? You could tell them? No, just kidding. Well, that's great. Excellent. Either way, it's a good thing. So tell me, you told me about you, strings, chorus, you like music. Anything else about school that you really, really like?
The teachers, they're amazing. I love the teachers there.
Oh, that's nice. Okay, and if there was anything that we could improve at your school, what would you tell the board and superintendent to improve?
I think that the lunchroom is really loud, so maybe if we had like separate tables outside, maybe it'd be a little bit quieter.
Make it a little bit quieter. Maybe we should have some music in the.
Yeah.
With drums, with drums. And we could have, we could have drums every day, like was requested, and part of lunch, and we could have music, and it could be soothing, and maybe that'll take care of the sound. Very interesting. There might be something to that, Dr. Blackburn, we may have to look into that. All right, good suggestion. Do we, do you have any family members with you here tonight?
I have my dad.
Dad, can you stand? And that's what we have with you. Well, excellent. Well, thank you very much for joining us.
You're welcome.
Okay, prior to the board meeting, we had the pleasure of listening to Capeview fourth, fifth, and sixth grade chorus, as well as fifth and sixth grade drummers. Under the direction of Charlotte Reinhardt, music teacher, the students will perform one more number for us. Oh, okay. Yeah, I'm in.
There's a brand new Christmas dance, it's the latest sensation. Jingle, 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 jingle. It started with North Carolina's reindeer station. Jingle, 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 jingle. With all the reindeer take off, they always have to shake off all the snow. So let's go! Now we'll show you how to do it. If you try, you can remember. Jingle, 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 jingle. We'll dance around the Christmas trees here in late December. Jingle, 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 jingle. Antes your hips will show off like reindeer shake the snow up just like this. So let's twist! Do the reindeer twist! You know it goes like this! A dance you can't resist! A rock-a-reindeer twist! Don't tell me that you can't learn. Come on and shake your antlers and twist! Round and round and up. Shake your antlers up and down and up. Shake your antlers. Round and round and up. Shake your antlers up and down and up. Shake your antlers. Ooh, ah! Do the reindeer twist! You can do the reindeer twist when your presence keeps on shaking. Shake it, shake it. Shake it, shake it. Or when you stir and batter for the cookies, you'll be baking. Bake it, bake it. Bake it, bake it. And if you're not a dancer, you just pretend you're fancy shaking snow. So let's go! Do the reindeer twist! Round and round and up. You know it goes like this! Up and down and up. A dance you can't resist! Round and round and up. Rock-a-reindeer twist! Up and down and up. Shake your antlers. Don't tell me that you can't learn. Come on and shake your reindeer twist! The reindeer twist! Yeah!
Okay, clearly the best part of a school board meeting. And it's all downhill from here, hopefully not. Thank you so much for being with us this evening. That was wonderful. We will now take a short recess so that students can gather their belongings.
Five, four, three, two.
Okay. That brings us back, and we will start with the adoption of the agenda. Dr. Blackburn, if you please.
Mr. Ziegler and members of the board, on today's agenda, we have one administrative staff recommendation, four recognition items, 26 consent items, three action items, eight information items, and one staff report. You also have the yellow supplemental agenda, which are changes made to the agenda since being released to the public. There has been one revision to item A7 on administrative staff recommendation, one recognition addition, item B8 on recognition of the municipal winner of the 2015 Veterans' Bass Challenge, two consent, lots of laughter on that one, two consent additions, item F24 on school improvement plans, and item F25 on school advisory council reports, one consent revision to item F14 on student expulsions, one action item revision, item G40 on department-slash-school initiated agreements, and three information revisions, item H42 on the comprehensive annual financial report, item H43 on school year calendar standards, and the 2016-2017 school year calendar, and item H44 on revisions to policy 5120 and policy 7120. Also, there was a staff reports addition, item I50 on the 2016 FSA test results in the school choice application process, as well as a revision to that same item.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt the December 8th, 2015 school board meeting agenda and its revisions?
Move to approve.
Second.
Move to approve by Mrs. Henderson, second by Mrs. Neese. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Blackburn, let's move on to administrative staff recommendations, please.
Yes, sir. Under item A7, you have one administrative staff recommendation to consider.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, please vote. Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Blackburn?
Mr. Ziegler and members of the board, I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome and recognize Judd Kaminsky on his reclassification and transfer from the position of assistant principal at Delora Middle School to the position of principal at Palm Bay Magnet High School. And I'd like to ask Ms. Michelle Erwin, she's already done that, to help me out with allowing Mr. Kaminsky to speak to us for a little bit.
Thank you very much. I want to take a minute just to thank all the board members for this opportunity. In addition, I'd also like to thank our superintendent, Dr. Blackburn. I'd like to thank Ms. Van Meter. I'd like to thank my current area superintendent, Mrs. Klein. I'd like to also thank my new area superintendent, Dr. Mullins. I'd also like to recognize all my former principals that have assisted me in my endeavors, Mr. Tuttle, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Solomon, and my current principal, Mr. Pruitt. And last but certainly not least, and actually foremost, I'd like to thank my family for sticking through me through all my endeavors. Thank you very much.
Okay, that brings us to recognition of visitors, guests, and staff, and I will start with board members, if there's anybody you'd like to recognize or speak about. Any? No? Okay, you have first prerogative. Neither do I. In that case, Dr. Blackburn.
First item B8 is to recognize Mr. Andy Ziegler for being named the municipal winner of the Second Annual Stick Marsh Veterans' Bass Challenge, held on November 14th, 2015. Here to make the presentation is Mr. John Moser, chairman of the Melbourne Regional Chamber's Veterans Resource Committee. Mr. Moser.
Thank you, Dr. Blackburn, chairman, members of the board. We're indeed pleased to be here tonight, along with Troy Ford. We are from the Melbourne Regional Chamber's Veteran Resource Committee. Just briefly, just a little bit about the Veterans Resource Committee. Veterans Resource Committee here with the Melbourne Chamber is an all-source resource that attempts to serve the needs of our veterans here in all of Brevard County, but primarily in the central and southern area. We do such things as have a mentorship program whereby we can marry up people that have occupations, professions, or involved in the community, that they can marry up with veterans that are returning from service, or getting, starting their own businesses where they can link up with these experienced folks and help them as they endeavor to extend themselves and to be able to improve themselves and be able to step out into the community. We also have regular job fairs to be able to provide a conduit for veterans to be able to find jobs. We have at least quarterly meetings whereby we have guest speakers that may speak on anything from important veterans issues to employment issues, you know, professional recommendations on how they might improve themselves for a professional employment. And we also have each year one major event, and that's our Veterans Bass Challenge. We, this year, have had our second inaugural, or second annual event, and it was held on November the 14th. And the chamber and the committee, along with Bass Pro Shop and our sponsor, the Allen and Company, we held this on, like I said, November the 14th. And essentially, what the Bass Challenge is, primarily, is to provide one full day for our disabled veterans to, free of charge, to be out on the water fishing and just have a great time. We have, a goal is usually 50 three-member teams. That three-member team is made up of a boat captain, who, it's their boat. Then we have a municipal or civic leader that's on that team and in that boat, and we also have a disabled veteran that's fishing as well. And they fish the entire day, and at the conclusion of the day, as they make their various catches, they take a photo of the length of that particular fish, and it's transmitted back to headquarters, it's back at Bass Pro. And throughout the day, we keep a running log of the sizes of those fish. And of course, at the end of the day, we tabulate and see who had the winning fish. And then we, of course, give prizes out to all of our winners, and we have a special award for our municipal civic leader. And that award is the trophy you see to my left. And the trophy is a significant trophy because we, the premise behind this is that, if you're familiar with hockey and the Stanley Cup, each year, the winner of the Stanley Cup gets the winner's name emblazoned upon the trophy, and that team and that city gets to keep it for that particular year. Well, same with the trophy for the Bass Challenge. This year, again, Mr. Ziegler, he will have his name on a plaque that will go on the side of the trophy, that will be able to be kept here at the school board, be able to be used and so everyone can see that Mr. Ziegler did in fact win this particular tournament. You know, we, his, he was out there on the water all day long, and his winning fish didn't come in till near the end, so we weren't really sure if maybe he might have stopped off at Publix or Sam's or whatever. But I think we've been able to verify that he did in fact catch the fish. And we also know, he's known for working very, very hard or being away from the team and everything like that, so if you may excuse him, if he may have been out, you know, slipping off to do a little practicing fishing so he could win this particular trophy. But anyway, we're very proud and proud to present the trophy for the, this year's Bass Challenge to Andy Ziegler.
Okay, what they didn't mention is one of their missions is also helping to solve the problem of homeless veterans in Brevard County, and they've been very successful at moving towards that goal. And next year, now that the school board has the trophy, we're going to be throwing down the gauntlet to all the elected officials in Brevard County to get involved in supporting the mission of our veterans in Brevard. And hopefully, we get some of our, our employees to help out with the boat situation. There were only, I think, 23 boaters, and they were looking for a field of 50, and the shortage was bass boats. So we're gonna, we're gonna slay that problem next year and really help out our veterans, because I know this board and this school district really believe in our military community. Okay, we're with Dr. Blackburn.
Item B9 is a check presentation and recognition of the National Space Club Florida Committee and the Florida Legislature for helping make Brevard Space Week possible. We have with us tonight Adrian Lafitte, the National Space Club's Space Week chairman, as well as representatives from the Brevard delegation, to present a check to Janice Kershaw, executive director of Brevard Schools Foundation. Ms. Kershaw will introduce our guests.
Thank you. Good evening. Well, we are in the middle of our 13th Annual Brevard Space Week, which wouldn't be possible without the continued involvement of the National Space Club Florida Committee for giving both their financial and human resources. The club's financial contribution is motivated in part by the incentive provided by the Florida Legislature's School District Education Foundation Matching Grant Program that matches the club's contribution, dollar for dollar. From the delegation tonight, we have representing Speaker Christopher Foley's office, his legislative assistants, Ashley Gwynn and Kimber Vogel, they are with us. For those who don't know, Brevard Space Week is a STEM, or a science, technology, engineering, and mathematics education program designed to inspire the next generation of space explorers. The program involves teacher training, classroom lessons, and inspirational school assembly by Kennedy Space Center retiree Jim Kennedy, and a study trip for every sixth grade student to Kennedy Space Center for an action-packed day of experiential learning. I would like to now introduce Adrian Lafitte to say a few words before I talk a little bit more about the legislature's involvement. Adrian.
Thank you, Janice. As you guys know, our goal is to inspire the next generation of explorer, and we cannot think of a better way of doing that than providing our sixth grade students with the opportunity to visit the Kennedy Space Center for free for one entire day and get to see, get to experience, get to talk, get to hear, and actually provide projects so that they can do teamwork. And that's what I did for a living for 31 years, and I'm glad to see that we continue to do that and inspire our next generation. For the past over 10 years, the National Space Club has been honored to support this event, and it's my pleasure today to present to the Brevard School Foundation a check for $30,000 on behalf of the National Space Club.
Chairman Ziegler and Dr. Blackburn, if you would join us at the podium. Thank you, Adrian, and the National Space Club Florida Committee. What's most remarkable, remarkable about this contribution is the fact that because of the Florida Legislature's commitment to public-private partnerships, this $30,000 actually represents $60,000. And Florida is, is really very fortunate to have a matching grant program to incentivize giving so that we can give our students opportunities like Space Week. Last year, the legislature approved $4.5 million to be spread across education foundations statewide through the Consortium of Florida Education Foundations. Brevard Schools Foundation's share of that was $111,000, which we use for not only Space Week, but also to help fund the supply zone for teachers and for Bright Ideas Teacher mini-grants. This year, the statewide amount is in the governor's budget for $6 million. Fingers crossed that that passes. And we are just so appreciative for this opportunity that gives private contributors a chance to invest in our local educational priorities. And we have a certificate of appreciation for each of our legislators, legislators and the Space Club. And I'll hand those out and then say a few more words, and we can take a picture. All righty. Well, on behalf of Brevard Schools Foundation, I extend our gratitude to the National Space Club Florida Committee and its many members for helping fund Space Week, and to the Florida Legislature for its support of the matching grant program. So again, thank you very, very much. Again, thank you. Oh, and if you haven't RSVP'd, we're having sponsor day for Space Week on this Friday, so any board members that would like to join us, please just let me know. Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Blackburn.
Item B10 is the recognition of the district's newest national model school of professional learning communities at work. Dr. Jane Raspous, Director of Professional Learning and Development, will be presenting. Dr. Raspous.
Good evening, Dr. Blackburn, Chairman Ziegler, board members, and guests. This evening, we're recognizing the latest national model school of PLCs at work. The number of national model schools within Brevard Public Schools currently stands at 22. And to achieve model status, schools must demonstrate commitment to the concepts of learning in professional learning communities, implement those concepts for no less than three years, present clear and convincing evidence of improved student learning, and explain their practices, their structures, and the culture through an application process. At this time, I'd like to invite our superintendent, Dr. Desmond Blackburn, our school board chairman, Mr. Andy Ziegler, to join me in front as we take a picture, recognizing the leadership, the hard work, and commitment that Quest Elementary has exhibited in becoming a national model school of PLCs at work. The school will be presented with a framed certificate and a banner that will be hanging. I want to introduce Quest Elementary School Principal Ellie Lee, and let's give Mrs. Lee and her hardworking staff a round of applause for this. Thank you.
Great stuff. We need more of that. Dr. Blackburn?
Item B11 is to congratulate Shemene Rice and Maggie Molito on their induction into the Science Teacher Hall of Fame, and to recognize the continuing contributions of previously inducted science teachers. To begin the presentation is Cindy Van Meter, Associate Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction.
Thank you, Dr. Blackburn. Good evening, board members. Brevard Public Schools and the Space Coast Science Education Alliance have worked in partnership to honor our exemplary science teachers since 1999. Teachers selected for this prestigious honor twice are eligible to be considered for induction into our Science Teacher Hall of Fame, and I'm pleased to recognize the ongoing contributions of our active Hall of Fame. of our active Hall of Fame science teachers, and to induct the two new members to this impressive group. The Space Coast Science Education Alliance, Harris Corporation, and the Brevard Schools Foundation will present a $1,000 honorarium to our newest inductees, and a $100 honorarium to each of our previously inducted teachers as a special thank you for their continued dedication and service to our students. So I hate to ask Dr. Blackburn and Mr. Ziegler to get up again and come on down and join us as we award them their checks, and then take a group photo. And as you're joining us down here, I would like to introduce Ginger Davis. She is our Secondary Science Resource Teacher.
Thank you. It is always a thrill for me to have a chance to showcase science in Brevard. As you may know, we are known across the state and nation for our strong science programs. Of course, our success in science is made possible by the support of our school board, district leaders, and the Brevard Schools Foundation, and by the support of our dedicated Involved Community. We benefit tremendously from the strong generous commitment of our longstanding partner, Harris Corporation, as well as the Space Coast Science Education Alliance. But of course, as we all know, a major key to our success lies with our talented, dedicated science teachers. While school systems nationwide are struggling to find qualified science teachers, we are fortunate to have some of the best in the country right here in Brevard, and we certainly want to keep them here. So I am pleased to recognize our returning Harris Science Hall of Fame teachers. From Edgewood Junior Senior High, Ryan Silc. From Suntree Elementary, Jana Gabrielski. From Gulfview Elementary, Leanne Harold. Satellite High School, John Lathrow. Cocoa Beach Junior Senior High School, Dr. Scott McCord. O'Gally High School, Debbie Minor. Cocoa High School, Raul Montez. And Stone Middle Magnet School, Richard Regan. And it is now with great pleasure and pride that I introduce our newest Science Hall of Fame inductees. First, please join me in congratulating Maggie Molito from West Shore Junior Senior And Shamine Rice from Surfside Elementary School.
that we have 2.6% of the students in the state, but these teachers help us take over 30% of the science awards. So, we owe a lot to these great science teachers for making this district number one in science in the state. Okay, resolutions and proclamations? There are none. Presentations? There are none. Public comment. We are now at public comments. The maximum allotted time for each speaker is three minutes. Clarification of information presented and answers to questions specific to district business and educational matters will be posted on the school board's website under a section called "For the Record." Please be reminded that profane, abusive, or slanderous speech is not permitted, as we all need to be good role models for any students that may be watching. I will call you up in order. The first three will be Gina Duncan, Daniel Waldesusa, and Lexi Wright. Gina?
Dr. Blackburn, Chairman Ziegler, board members. My name is Gina Duncan, and I'm a longtime Brevard County resident. I grew up on Merritt Island and attended Merritt Island High School. I was very proud and fortunate to be the class president at Merritt Island High School of the student body, as well as an all-state middle linebacker for an undefeated state championship football team at Merritt Island in 1973 that went to Tallahassee, Leon, and won the first state championship for the Merritt Island program. I'm here on behalf of Equality Florida, and those in the audience who are wearing red. I'm the Transgender Inclusion Director now at Equality Florida, and in my role as Transgender Inclusion Director, I have had the pleasure of speaking to city councils, county commissions, major employers, law enforcement agencies, healthcare, the media, and school boards all across the state about the importance of fully inclusive nondiscrimination language and policies. Schools are places, as you know, where students, faculty, and administration should feel safe and secure. Students who experience acceptance and support at school are more highly motivated, engaged in learning, and committed to achieving the best possible education. Faculty and administration who are able to bring their whole selves to work are engaged mentors who provide inspiration to bring the best and the brightest out of each student in our district. The foundation for this educational excellence is confirming that all are protected by adding sexual orientation and gender identity to the school board nondiscrimination language. The Department of Education has issued rulings and guidelines in the area of LGBT anti-discrimination language, but these regulations are just that, they are guidelines, for local school boards to use to align their own policies and to create strong protections for all students and faculty at the local level. While Brevard recognizes that students and employees have the right to learn or work in an environment untainted by sexual or other forms of harassment or discrimination, it is time to codify these policies by adding sexual orientation and gender identity to the district's anti-discrimination statements. Currently, Equality Florida has worked with organizations across the state to pass 41 fully inclusive human rights ordinances. We now protect over 56% of the state's population in areas of housing, employment, and public accommodations. It's time to do this at the school board level. It's time for Brevard to finalize this important step and to join school boards like Miami-Dade, Orange County, Broward, Leon, Palm Beach, and Duval Counties, to name a few, in protecting all of our students, all of our faculty, and all administration in the LGBT community. I wanted to leave you with, there have been several model policies and very important resource guides which have recently come out. You might have already seen these, one of which is the Broward County LGBT Critical Support Guide.
Thank you, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Okay, this has been model policy, and then secondly, leaving you with Schools in Transition, which is absolutely the model policy. And I'll leave this. Thank you very much.
Okay, Daniel.
My name is Daniel Antonio Waldesusa. I am a chemistry and physics teacher, two-time Teacher of the Year, Assistant Principal Pool member, a veteran, and since 2002, I've been a loyal employee of the Brevard Public Schools systems. I embrace serving every student with excellence as the standard. I'm of Azorian descent. My family immigrated from the Azor Islands in the 1950s, and I thank Brevard Public Schools for protecting me from discrimination based on my race. I am Caucasian. I appreciate the board policies that protect all of our students and my colleagues based on the color of their skin. I am a male. It's comforting to know that in the workplace, Brevard Public Schools ensures that my gender has no impact on my performance evaluations. I am a Buddhist. I am free to practice my religion of compassion, and I can do so with safety of the nondiscrimination notice to protect me. I'm a first-generation American and the first in my family to attend college. Thank you, Brevard Public Schools, for ensuring my workplace is free from discrimination based on my national origin. I am married. Despite this board's practices of the past, you now recognize my marriage. Thank you for protecting me as a valued employee. I'm a member of the National Science Teachers Association, and I'm a Democrat. Thank you for ensuring that my participation in these professional and political organizations does not bring discrimination into the workplace. I am 41 years old. Thank you for protecting me in the workplace as I age, and continue to devote my life in service to the students of Brevard County. I am also gay. As a legislative body, how do you protect me and other LGBT employees, students, families, from nondiscrimination, or from discrimination? Will you please answer our call to change the nondiscrimination notice? We all would like to believe that discrimination is a thing of the past. One year ago today, I felt the ugly clause of discrimination. My driver's license was canceled by the DMV, not because of my driving record, but because I was driving while gay. It sounds preposterous, but I assure you that this type of discrimination exists. I believe in hard work, pride in a job well done. During pre-planning this year, the nondiscrimination notice was read verbatim to the faculty and staff at my school. This was the first time that had happened in my career. I was then required to sign off and acknowledge that notice. I found it ironic that I was required to acknowledge a statement that I know in my heart lacked the inclusion that I expect from a tax-funded public institution. Please consider amending the nondiscrimination notice to include LGBT communities. For many years, I lacked the courage to ask, but I stand here before you this evening with pride. Please consider treating others fairly, equally, and with respect. I thank you so much for your time this evening.
Thank you. Okay, Lexi. After that will be Scott Waldesusa, Richard Charbonneau, and Courtney Barker.
Welcome to Brevard County, Dr. Blackburn, members of the school board. My name is Lexi Wright, and I appear before you today as a resident and business owner in Brevard County. I am also the spouse of a school board employee, and the mother of a son who graduated from Palm Bay High School, and a daughter who will graduate from Palm Bay Magnet High School shortly. First, I would like to thank you for the school board's swift compliance with recognizing marriage and allowing me, for the first time in the 10 years that my wife has been an employee with the school board, to be covered as her spouse on her health insurance. I am grateful for that. Next, I would like to urge you to move forward with adding sexual orientation and gender identity to your nondiscrimination policy. Doing so sends a very clear message to the students you promised to serve with excellence that all students are valued and protected while attending your schools. In addition, this reassures your employees that they will be safe and respected at work, which allows them to be authentic and bring their whole selves to the students that they serve with excellence every single day. Updating your policy also ensures that Brevard County will have the capability to compete for the best candidates for future employees. During my children's school careers, they suffered bullying, just as many other students have, due to the lack of inclusion of these few words we are requesting be added to the policy. My family has suffered from exclusion and feelings of being less than due to the lack of those words in your policy. I have many examples, but will share just a few to stay within my allotted three minutes. When a teacher spoke directly to the stepmother of our children on their father's side and ignored their stepmother, my wife. When I was unable to choice my daughter to a school that we felt would be safer for her, even though her stepmother, my wife, worked there. And every time, my wife could not bring herself to introduce me as her wife to people that we ran into that she worked with because she was afraid of losing her job. I request that you add these words to your nondiscrimination policies for students and employees so that no other family will ever have to share our experiences. Thank you so much for your consideration and your time.
Thank you. Okay, Scott.
Hello, board. Dr. Blackburn, thank you so much for meeting with me the other day. That made me feel very good and confident that there's some movement in this difficult decision I know you guys have on your plate. But you did ask me to do one thing. You asked me to bring some people and show you how much support there was in this community. And just a few things to add from what everybody else has already said. This year at Space Coast Pride Event, we expected 2,500 people. One of your major sponsors of that event was Harris Corporation on North of Grumman. They were the largest sponsors, all right, and the largest turnout we could ever expect. It ended up over 5,500 people there instead of 2,500. So the community is behind us. They travel from across the state to stand behind us. Now, I would like to add one other thing, and I'm going to keep this kind of short, but we do have a problem here. The DMV did take Dan and I's driving privileges away for driving while gay. That is a fact. You can look it up on Google, and you'll see all the images and all the newspapers. There's 19 pages of it. It was absurd, all right? This school board, with the legal background that it has, is putting themselves in danger for a federal lawsuit. I do not want to see this school board lose money that these students need because they didn't make the right decision. I beg you to look towards what this school and this county needs to build a better future for our students, and follow what you guys wrote on your mission statement as excellence as the standard. So, thank you very much, and I really appreciate you all listening to me, and please vote for the confidence that we really do need this change. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Richard Charbonneau.
Excuse me, I didn't take my pain medication today. My leg is killing me. Richard Charbonneau, Satellite Beach. I've got a daughter in Satellite High. Everything's going great, and I think she's going to the Stetson Three Plus Free Plan. You go for three years at the land, and then three years at law school, and yet we could go right through, but it's been, Brevard's been good to her, and we're not, we don't have any problem with that. I want to talk about something, and I think the board's got this all straight. I think every one of you do, which is rare for me. But last week, I thought I went into the Twilight Zone for a minute. You had one speaker get up here, and he started talking about having like some crimes be reported and some crimes not be reported, and some of them be dealt with internally in the school. And I gave everybody here a thing of Chapter 39, and then on the other side of it is you're actually your own, on your own rules. But, and I think you all know this, that there's probably only one person here that probably knows what the word "misprisoned" means. And misprisoned means that you know of a crime, and you don't report it. And that's against the law in Florida, particularly if you're a mandatory reporter. Now, Dan Bennett got up here, and he got up here and he's talking some nonsense, so I figured, well, maybe he just was a little bit confused. I went over and talked to Mike Scully a little bit, and Mike Scully said, well, I'll talk to him, you know, he doesn't really have it downright. So I went and talked to him, and sure enough, he thinks that you can have some sort of internal investigation... internal investigation of crimes, within your school board or within the school itself, some sort of crimes. And you can have an investigation of, like, did Johnny cheat on the test or something like that, but something that comes down to a felony. If you don't report the felony, you commit a crime yourself. And if you tell somebody not to report the felony, you committed another crime. And the crimes keep escalating here, and this could get into a felony thing, but this is like the craziest thing I've ever heard. The school board and the rest of you are not policemen. You're school people. And Mike Scully's the only police officer here. Is he even here tonight? Oh, yeah, there he is. He's back there. But if there's a crime, you have to report it to them. You can't not report it to them. You can get yourself an awful amount of trouble like that. What happened to my daughter at Sea Park Elementary? Some of you have seen the pictures. And I didn't deal with it the right way, but I will now. And that said, I know that you all know the right way of doing this, but everybody else has got to know too that you are mandatory reporters, and you can't misprison a crime, which means hide. Thank you.
Next, we'll have Courtney Barker, followed by Gary Schifferin, and then we'll start with that.
Thank you. Good evening. Courtney Barker, I'm the city manager for the city of Satellite Beach, and I'm actually here tonight to discuss some concerns that I have, also some possible solutions. Approximately two years ago, the PTO president of Surfside Elementary contacted me and asked me to, if there was any way the city could participate in the purchase of a playground system for their school. And I said, well, at the time, we couldn't because we just didn't have the funds, but now we're in the position of doing that. So when I contacted her back and said, okay, let's talk about that. Surfside is different. It's an open playground. There's no fences, so our community can access that playground. So for us, it means we participate a little bit, and we don't have to maintain it. So it's a good deal for the community because we can, in that area particularly, it's a good location. So when I was talking to her, I asked, when can we expect to get this done, and when will be the completion date? And she said, well, we have to do some fundraising first. And I said, fundraising? I thought, when the school board be participating in this? And she said, no, they only provide playgrounds to new schools, so the PTOs are responsible for the playground equipment at elementary schools. And I have to say, even though I have a daughter at Holland, I was actually very surprised with that. And when I started looking into it, apparently that's a common practice. Because to me, a playground system is as important to an elementary school as a football field is to a high school. So I thought, the playground at Surfside is 20 years old. They spend a lot of money trying to keep it up. They, new playgrounds are $30,000 to $50,000. We budget in our city $37,000 to $47,000 a year for playground replacements. So it's very expensive, and if you can imagine a PTO of a school the size of Surfside trying to come up with that kind of money, it's very hard. And when you really start thinking about some of the other communities here that don't have perhaps the buying power that the residents of Satellite Beach do, you kind of look at it from an equity standpoint and start wondering, what do these other schools do if they can't come up with that amount of money? So I was, I know that, I know you have 47 elementary schools, I think, right? About, yeah, something like that. So I know that obviously you're not going to come up with a budget for all of them to have a $50,000 playground. So I thought, perhaps we could look at, at least looking at a matching fund program for the PTOs to at least bring the end in sight. Because right now, for them to come up with that amount of money is almost impossible. And it would give at least some of the schools that don't have a lot of buying power at least a running chance to get something out there. Because I think of, my daughter, who runs around like a maniac, I can't imagine her being in school from 8:00 to 2:00 every day without having something to do at recess. And if you don't have a playground system out there or equipment, what do they do? So the other thing I wanted to bring up before I step down is, we do share resources with Surfside. We can't do that with Holland because it's fenced. So that might be, I know that there's some concerns sometimes with liability, or maybe vandalism, or garbage and things like that. But I think maybe if you look at it from a cost-benefit standpoint of us helping out with some of, us meaning cities or counties, it's cheaper to share every time. If we can share the cost, it's always cheaper. It's a sharing economy now. So if we can make those things happen and make those resources open to our community, then it would definitely be less expensive for everyone.
Okay. Thank you. And if you could stick around until the end of public comment, we want to give our superintendent some direction on this topic.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Next is Gary Schifferin.
Gary Schifferin, Executive Director of the Brevard Association of School Administrators and Affiliates, Dr. Blackburn, school board members. I've come before you tonight to encourage a positive vote on item F-21, which is non-bargaining salary adjustments. I've appeared at this podium a number of times expressing my thoughts on the importance of your school administrators, school secretaries, cafeteria workers, as well as the many hard-working, highly qualified personnel who work right here at ESF. What I would like to emphasize tonight is that we are a team, just like you are on the school board. Yes, you vote individually, but if you cannot have agreement, then many good decisions do not take place. The same thing could be said about the relationship between those who work in the schools and those who support our schools, who are the district administrators. We indeed are a team, and the support our schools receive from assistant superintendents, area superintendents, directors, and a host of others cannot be stated in stronger language. This board takes great pride in the success of our school system. Of course, we do as well. And again, we certainly recognize the strength of our instructional staffs, who work directly with our students on a daily basis. But if you were to ask your teachers, who contributes the most to their success? Many will tell you about the hard-working administrators who support whatever they do. And if you were to ask your school administrators, who makes their jobs run smoothly? Many of them will tell you about all the support they get from those who work in the area offices, as well as those who work at ESF. We are a team, a team that makes significant contributions to the success of our staffs and, most importantly, our young people. I encourage each of you to reply yes on your keyboard when F-21 comes up for vote. Thank you for your consideration, and happy holidays.
Next, I'd like to invite up both Joe Denning and Natalie Barton. I understand the two want to come up together, and one will be speaking. Come on up. Thank you for joining us.
Hi, my name's Joe Denning. I'm one of the leaders of Rainbow Youth of Brevard and LGBT Safe Space for kids, elementary to early college age. We have over 50 members. 90 of them are all around Brevard County, from Rockledge to Satellite High School. This isn't my first time being the leader of an LGBT thing. I was the president of the GSA for three years at Satellite High School, and I've been attending Brevard Public Schools since I was in kindergarten. But throughout this entire time, there have been no, like, there have been no protection for LGBT people with sexual identity or gender identity. Through my years, there have been multiple accounts where kids have felt unsafe, for whatever reason, and counselors or the principal have just dropped the issue when realizing that the student has been gay. One of these accounts was when someone's life was at stake. He was posting very worrying things. Me and my friends were very worried about him, and once brought up to the principal, he was very worried, asked, oh, does he have a girlfriend? No, he's gay. The "oh" was the only response. It was immediately dropped. Like I said, I'm the leader of Rainbow Youth of Brevard. We have over 50 members, and almost every week, the majority of them tell me that this is their favorite time of the week, that they wish we had multiple meetings, and that this is the only place that they feel safe to be truly themselves at. I just think it would be a good idea for kids to feel truly safe every single day at school as well, and to be truly themselves. It could help save lives. It could help save multiple lives. My hope is that you put this on your agenda sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Natalie Barton. I also help lead Rainbow Youth of Brevard, and I also have been a student in Brevard County Schools since kindergarten. I remember when I was a kid, before I even told anybody that I was gay, I started hearing rumors about myself being gay, hearing kids while I'm walking through the school halls yelling slurs at me, well, I'm just trying to mind my own business and get an education. And that wore down on my self-esteem, that wore down on me as a student. And now I get to support all these kids at Rainbow Youth, and it really would just mean the world to me to be able to tell those kids, hey, the school protects you, even if all these students, because every single one of them gets bullied or has at least one account of some kind of bullying. Be able to say, although the students may not support you, the school board does, and the school is behind you, and that you are protected. And that would mean the world to all these students, and it means the world to me. And I'm not going to stop fighting for this until you guys put it in here. We will all be here with our red shirts every time until this is taken care of. And also, I have these here, which shows some of the things that Equality Florida has done, which counties they've, like, what kind of, what's the word for it? What kind of victories they've made with things like HROs and safe school policies and stuff, and which counties have those. So you can see which counties are ahead of us and which counties are supporting us. Because when those counties are there, people that are in our community want to go to these counties. And you guys are honestly hurting yourselves by not having these policies because less people are going to want to come be a part of these schools. So I just really hope that you guys consider all of this, and if any of you guys would like to come to one of our Rainbow Youth meetings, we would be glad to see you on every Thursday at 7:00 at Sun Shop in downtown Melbourne. If any of you would show up, you can talk to these kids, and you can hear their testimonies and understand how important it is to each individual one, because they're as young as elementary school up to college age. So thanks for listening to both of us and all of us, and I really hope that you guys consider this. And did I get these to you?
Thank you. Okay, next, we have Dan Bennett, followed by Gregory Gerard.
Good evening, members of the board. Good evening, Dr. Blackburn. I'm wearing red today, which is coincidence. They didn't tell me it was red day, but that's okay because it's a good cause, and I'm proud to be wearing the same color as other people that are bringing you a good message this evening. I hope you'll take action on that. I'm getting applause for my shirt. Thank you. I would, I do want to talk about something else, and it'll be positive as well. It's from a memo and a newspaper article. It came out November 3rd, so I'm a little bit behind on this. But, Dr. Blackburn, you gave us a lot of hope when you issued a moratorium on these standardized tests, 190-plus hit the newspaper, and we think that was a good decision because there needs to be a paradigm shift, and we're beginning that here. Where to improve education, we need to put our time into instructional time, not into testing time. Somewhere over the course of the last 20 years, it became the belief that in order to teach children, we take two steps forward, and then we take a test. We take two tests forward, we take a test. Can we ever take more steps forward before we test? Because the real learning happens during instruction. Sure, a test can be a method of teaching. A test can be a learning instrument, but not necessarily when it's a standardized test or preparing and scaring the heck out of kids for the next standardized test, which is around the corner from the last one. When I was a kid, Dr. Blackburn, my grandparents lived in Sunrise Lakes, which you'll know where that is on University Drive in Sunrise. They lived in Phase 1, which was for the Spanish-American War veterans. And I'd go visit them on the weekends, and my grandmother would parade me around to everybody, and that this is my grandson. Oh, you look what a cute little grandson. And very quickly, the conversation went around to, I went to the doctor. What'd the doctor do? He took a test. And all these people, the ladies were bobbing in the pools. I went to the doctor, I took a test. Sometimes the ambulance would take someone away. Good luck on the test. It was all testing. Medical care was nothing but another. These people were craving treatment. They needed, they never got treatment. They just got a test. A nurse would take one away. He failed the test. There was never any medication, any therapy. There was never anything to help these people. And somehow, my chosen profession has turned into, we test, we test, we test, we test. It's time for paradigm shift. Now, this comes with a word of caution, because I know this county, I know the culture of this county. Dr. Blackburn, in your memo, which I cheered when I read it, it was written to principals, and it said, we're suspending these tests. The newspaper said, we're suspending these tests. But of course, go ahead, use them if it's already part of your school plan to use them. And just a word of caution, what I'm hearing around the county is a lot of teachers are saying, hey, I thought these were going to be optional. I thought we didn't have to do them. And what I'm hearing is that they're not optional. The school decided we're doing them, and we're doing them because principals are giving the explanation that, well, we're so worried about our grade, we're so worried about results. Well, remember, the paradigm shift is that if we're worried about achievement, we should be teaching. And yet, the old paradigm is that if we're worried about achievement, we need to be testing more. So I would encourage principals, I would encourage you, to monitor, how's it going at the schools? Are we really easing up on those tests? Are we letting it be a teacher-made decision? Did we already write into the plan that we're giving the test no matter what? Are teachers being told that there's no other evidence that you're covering standards unless you give the test? We have to shift this paradigm and get back to true instruction, because that's where we'll get back to true achievement. Thank you.
Thank you. Gregory.
Well, board, and Dr. Blackburn, we meet again. I'm Mr. Gerard. I'm the principal of campus charter, and since I met with you the last time, the time before that, we've gone through an incredible journey, not just myself, but everyone on our team and our community and our students. And I'm happy to report to you that we're continuing to fight that journey. We're continuing to move in a positive direction, and I couldn't be more proud of my staff who have stuck by and have fought the fight with us, and our community who has come together and has chosen to accept the fight too. My point here, being here tonight, is simply saying thank you for giving us your confidence in us, which has allowed us to move further towards the goal that we all had originally. So, thank you.
Barbara Gonto, if I said that correctly, is next, followed by Tina Deskovich.
Good evening. I am here this evening to address the schools of choice requirements for the 2016 school year. I read through the newly created document last night and have some concerns to its validity and usage for students that wish to apply to a school of choice for the 2016-2017 school year. The document states a score of a Level 3 or above on the FSA for ELA and math must be obtained. However, the FSA is not reported as a Level 1 through 5. The problem is that the FSA is reported as percentiles. I am confused as to how this will translate into the levels presented on the admission requirements proposal. Beyond the inaccurate score reporting, the FSA scores were not received this year until well into this school year, far too late to be used for student admittance. Should this happen again, the FSA reports will not be available to make a determination regarding acceptance. Should this happen, what is Plan B? I would hope that old test scores will not be utilized as they were last year. Finally, Dr. Blackburn, being the wise man that he is proving to be, has already deemed the FSA unusable for many reasons and purposes. Schools of choice admission could be yet another purpose that the FSA is unusable due to its questionable validity. I'm here to ask that when you vote this evening on the revised requirements, that you consider the many flaws of this current proposal. Last year, arbitrary decisions were made that affected students and their admittance. More importantly, decisions regarding these requirements need to be made that have been deliberately and thoroughly thought through to avoid problems in the spring. Do they make sense? Can they be utilized effectively and efficiently? Is there a contingency plan in the event that unforeseeable circumstances occur? In my opinion, the requirements as they are currently written are not functional or suitable and need further revisions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Tina Deskovich.
I know, maybe. I have a couple of things that I want to, I know the good strategy, bad strategy meeting is next week, and I feel like this is my last opportunity to get in front of you and declare what I think is important right now, facing Brevard County Schools. And there are many things, but two I just want to address quickly in my short three minutes. And the first one is the role of high-stakes testing. Again, I've been on this bandwagon now for a very long time, but Agenda Item H44 tells me that we still are not in the complete right direction. You've made some great progress, the state's even made some great changes, and we're thrilled with it, but the kids being accepted into choice schools are now faced again with a test that you've voted no confidence, publicly said you don't have any confidence in this test, and these children could face not being admitted. They might have excellent grades, they might have letters of recommendation from teachers, principals, mentors in their life, and yet they still might be turned away on a test that's not valid, and I think there's a problem. Number two, and this one's very important to me, and has been on my mind for years now, it's the security in our schools. Our schools, some of them, the school my child attends was built in the 1960s, and it is not, it was not built for what we're dealing with today. Several years ago, after the Sandy Hook incident, we called in Brevard County Sheriff's Office at our school, and did an evaluation, and it's not safe. It's not anymore safe today. We raised some money and put up half a fence. It's still not safe. I know that we have SRO officers in our high schools and in our middle schools, we have three in our elementary schools, we have 55 elementary schools, so those are elementary schools that do not have SRO officers in them. I know it costs money. I believe in being fiercely conservative, but I think this is an area we need to look at, look at seriously. I hope our communities can contribute. I know that some of our cities are helping defray some of the costs. I don't know how this is going to work, I don't have the exact answers, but I'm hoping we'll look at it. I think SRO officers not only provide security, but with the relationships they can build with children are important, especially with the divisiveness we see in our country right now. I think it's important. I've also looked at other districts in the country, and they really got some great plans that they're putting in action as far as training teachers on some of these situations that could arise, building emergency plans. I just, I feel like we're kind of behind the ball in this, and I don't want to get to a point where we're looking back and wishing we would have taken care of some of these things. Thank you.
Thank you. The board wishes to thank this evening's speakers. Your willingness to speak to the board is appreciated, and I believe that some board members wanted to comment. Mrs. Neese, you had requested a comment, I believe, on the playground speaker, or give some direction. Or would you like?
No, it's okay. I just, I guess if it's the, if it's the will of the majority of the board, I certainly would like to investigate further the playground issue. I mean, I've thought for a while that we invest in outdoor facilities in our middle schools and high schools, and I question why we're not doing it at our elementaries. And so, especially this idea of a partnership with satellite, to me, it seems like a win-win. But I would like to see what other board members think.
Any other board members want to comment?
Well, not to jump ahead of the assignments that Dr. Blackburn put out, but, you know, one of the pillars that we're looking at when we meet next week is facilities, and I believe I may be the board member tasked with that area. I agree completely, and it's not just playground equipment, it's equity in shading at some of our schools that do not have pavilions for outdoor activity. And so, those are things that I am definitely going to look at, that we make sure that we have a plan, just as we do for everything else. We have facility plan for those items, a renewal plan as well, and how that comes together, whether that's utilizing, you know, partnerships with the county, partnerships with municipalities, all those things are definitely going to be into play, because we're going to have to leverage those relationships to make sure that we have the right facilities in place for every child from VPK all the way through 12th grade. So I plan on making sure that that happens.
Any other board member? Mrs. Henderson?
Well, in addition to having to replace the equipment, they also have to maintain it themselves. So if a swing has a screw missing, it's up to the schools to get the people in, to buy the parts, and then have them fix it. So I also think that needs to be a part of that. The only thing I would say is that, and while I agree with Ms. Barker, that a partnership is certainly better than either one of us doing it all, because I think we're all financially strapped, my only concern is that we would not be doing something before the next budget, because it is something that we have not budgeted for, and I don't want to go down that path.
Ms. Belford?
I would certainly support looking at that issue going forward. I think the more opportunities that we have to partner with private organizations, municipalities throughout the county, to look at addressing the needs of the community as a whole, the better off we're going to be. So I certainly support additional dialogue on that issue.
Thank you. And I'm going to comment to the same point, Mrs. Belford, as Dr. Blackburn has mentioned us about coming up with a strategy to reach out to our local communities and our municipalities to find out what is important in each area, and figure out what we can do to be a partner and support their needs in those areas. So we will be having some further conversation on that, very possibly next week, if not during development of our strategic plan. Thank you, Dr. Blackburn, that's a good idea, and that fits perfectly with this conversation. We tell her now to hang tight, it'll be conversation with this board, it's something that we're all interested in for various different reasons. The pillar Mr. Craig spoke about is one of them, government relations, and of course, the student that spoke about the importance of more PE. So it seems just all go together.
So what I'm hearing is that maybe work on the proposal, it's not in this year's budget, which would in June 30 is, but if you're working with Surfside, keep in conversation, and maybe we could be looking ahead to next year at putting something together. I don't know what type of timeline you're on, or if Surfside, if you're looking at something sooner than that, but that would be probably as soon as we could look at something like that.
Okay. Any, that sounds fine. Go ahead, Dr. Blackburn, if you want to.
Well, thank you. We're starting to steal a little thunder from next Tuesday, so I just want to remind everyone to make sure you're here to have the Strategy Matters conversation, and endorse the forward progress that the board and I and the rest of the staff will take around six primary themes that we'll talk about. In much of the public discourse here tonight, I heard a lot of significant components of what you will hear next week. So please return next week as well, and we hope to continue to work together for the betterment of all people and all babies.
All right, thank you. To which one?
I want to speak to the policy.
Go ahead.
I'll speak to the policy. All of us attended FSBA last week. I actually sat in on a session in regards to transgender and equity issues, and talked a lot about the case just out of Illinois that was ruled on. And I just, I think it's time that we address this issue as a board. I know, I personally am ready to make the change to the policy. I don't know where everybody else is at, but given what I heard last week at FSBA, talking to other school districts, I believe it's time to move forward with this. And so, I'm just one board member, and so I'm just stating here publicly, I think it's time.
Anybody else like to speak to that?
I agree. I think I'm kind of the one that started this conversation, and we've kind of put all of that on hold to give Dr. Blackburn a chance to get in and start putting together that strategic plan. I do believe that's going to be part of our discussion next week at the strategic plan meeting. The only thing that I would add is that I don't know that we can take action on it tonight, and I don't know if that's what you were suggesting, but that's not, legally, we just can't do that tonight.
Oh, yeah, but I'm ready to.
I think the proper direction would be at this point, is Dr. Blackburn, if you can bring to us revised policy, including these changes to our agenda, and then we can discuss and move forward from there.
Got it.
Just very quickly, because this didn't fall into kind of our bucket conversation for next week, what was brought up this evening. Dr. Blackburn, if you could please follow up on Mr. Bennett's comments about the testing, I just want to make sure that we are uniform throughout the district, as far as what the expectations are on that.
Okay. I'm not sure what that means, because I think that, you know, I've talked to several principals, and part of the issue is that they have had some of that stuff as a part of their school improvement policy, which is why some of them are keeping it. Others are keeping some of the end-of-course tests, because the teachers aren't having to write their end-of-course tests, because they're already written for music, or Spanish, or whatever. So I'm not quite sure what that looks like, but I'm sure you'll let us know.
Well, and I think the expectation is what we need clarity on. I don't think that we can have uniformity in action throughout the entire district. I just think it's important that we have uniformity in understanding of the expectation. And that expectation is that if people have it in their school improvement plan, if they feel that the need is there, then by all means, I just want to make sure that we don't have anyone doing it just to do it, or because it's not the will of the teachers, or not part of the school improvement plan.
So the essence of the message that I delivered to principals was that, practically speaking, I don't expect to walk into a civil war going on in a school or in a community. If a community inclusive of parents, teachers, other support staff members, and if and when appropriate, students, believe in the assessment, and it's a valuable part of that culture, then I endorse that collaboration happening, and the continuation of that assessment going on in the school for the time being. But if it's not a part of some collaborative process, I don't, I would have a problem with that. So I can, that was the message in the initial communication. You know, if I'm hearing that that's not happening in all places, all cases, then I'll do some follow-up on that.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to the consent agenda. Dr. Blackburn?
There are 26 agenda items under this category, four with prior information.
Does any board member wish to pull any items on the consent agenda? Okay. Not hearing any. I will entertain a motion to accept the consent items.
Can I pull F26?
Ah. A late puller. We'll pull F26 for Mrs. Neese.
I just want a clarification.
Okay, in that case, I will entertain a motion to accept the consent items with the exception of F26.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, move by Mrs. Henderson, seconded by Mrs. Belford. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please vote.
I was just checking the number, but I think I got it right. We all remember the night. We're the Belford's.
Okay, motion passes 5-0. Okay. In that case, Mrs. Neese, F26, and just for a little change in flow here, an agenda item, there should be a motion before there is discussion. We've typically had discussion before a motion. So we will start with a motion before discussion.
I'll move to accept F26.
Second.
Okay, move by Mrs. Neese, seconded by Mrs. Belford. Discussion.
Okay. My question is, I would really just like feedback from Mrs. Archer on the record of exactly where she sees things on campus charter school. That's all. I just want things on the public record, on her thoughts. And I apologize for not letting you know ahead of time, I had enough questions.
That's okay, I'm prepared. With regard to the recommendation that we dismiss the 90-day termination letter, but keep an eye, a watchful eye on campus, I will agree with Mr. Gerard. He has, he and his staff have been working very hard, starting with the termination of their management company, which truly was the downfall of campus themselves. They have been working very diligently to recover, to get everything that we've asked them to do, financially, submitting September and October, looking over their financials, knowing that there is nothing outstanding that we find worrisome. They are currently working with the bank with regard to that $1.2 million loan that they are the guarantor on that was defaulted by EMG. So there are things that they have done in place. They have a new governing board as well, that's guiding and working on their administrative processes, to make sure that they are doing everything above board. So with that, I feel like they have done due diligence to make a difference where they were in August to where they are today.
Thank you.
And I felt very confident that that's exactly what you were going to say, I just wanted to have that on the record, so thank you.
Okay. Any further?
In that case, please vote. Motion passes 5-0. Okay. Would anybody like a break at this time?
Karen has a performance.
Karen has a performance, so we're going to see if we get her to the, see if we get her to the show on time. Okay, that being the case, then we move on to the action agenda. Dr. Blackburn?
Yes, sir. There are three items for your consideration. Item G39 is purchasing solicitation.
Okay, what are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Move by Mrs. Neese, seconded by Mrs. Belford. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion passes 5-0.
Next is item G40 on department-school initiated agreements.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Neese, seconded by Mrs. Henderson. Any discussion? Okay, no discussion. Once the, there it is, please vote. Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Blackburn?
And item G41 is on the Independent Citizens Oversight Committee Sales Certex Policy Recommendations.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, move by Mrs. Neese, seconded by Mrs. Henderson. Any discussion?
There's a wait count?
All right, please vote. Motion passes 5-0. Okay, now we will move on to the information agenda, which includes for board review, and will be brought back for action at a subsequent meeting. No action will be taken on these items tonight. Dr. Blackburn?
Mr. Ziegler, there are eight items under the information category.
Does any member wish to discuss anything on the information agenda? Oh, yeah, okay.
Age 43.
Age 43, got two votes for that. Any other items? Same? Okay. In that case, Mrs. Henderson, age 43.
My question on it is that, on this calendar, there is no notice that there are early-release Wednesdays. So am I to assume by looking at this, there's no early-release Wednesdays? Because I didn't see it as like an asterisk, and then something that said, you know, all Wednesdays are early-released. So I didn't know if we were having them, or we weren't having them.
I'm going to defer to my colleague.
Remember, that is a negotiable item, and so we can't preclude or just jump to conclusions that we're going to have early release next Wednesday. That'd be something for us to go to the table and talk about and discuss when we go back to the table in March.
But the issue with that is that parents are going to be making airline reservations, and when those were added in last year, we had to adjust the calendar one or day either side of this. And so, if this is the calendar we're going to put out there, we need to put a caveat then, that this calendar may adjust, but, you know, I'm just saying, we're the ones that get the phone calls when the calendar changes.
You know, I would like. We had one per month, and then over the summer, it changed to every Wednesday. And we gave no one more than a few weeks' notice, and that's really not fair.
I understand, and I say. I understand, and I say, I can safely assume that I would think that we would be having early-release Wednesday just exactly the way we'd have right now, but I just didn't want to, as I say, jump to conclusions. Remember, we were tasked with coming up with 100 additional minutes for planning time per week for our teachers. I think that between our union and where we are right now, we're happy with that decision, and I could see us moving forward and keeping what we have in the contract as of right now. But I understand completely, and I think that you're right, we do need to probably include that in there.
Okay, so when, I mean, I know you're not negotiating right now, but I mean, a timeframe, are we gonna know, is there a possibility that we would know something before the end of the school year? Because that is fair for parents.
Yes. Dan Bennett and I have talked about when we'd like to come back to the table, and Mr. Bennett has assured me that because the state legislature is going back into session in January, it looks like they would finish up sometime at the end of February, we would like to come to the, we'd like to come to the table sometime in March.
Hang on. Mr. Craig, did you have a comment?
I was just, I think I'm gonna say probably what Ms. Nisi said, but I don't think there's any legal requirement that we have to wait until a certain time, and I would ask that the superintendent take this for action, to work with staff, to figure out an expedited timeline to deal with this specific issue so that we can get, we can't have what we had last year. And we cannot wait till March to start talking about it, I guess is the point.
So, I'd like to think that we can put a plan together and accelerate the decision-making on this.
I'm not looking at Dan Bennett right now, but I'm sure you all are right now, and he's probably shaking his head. I'm sure we could get to the table, and we could talk about this real soon, and this one issue, and then we'll get back with you and make sure that it's in the calendar this year. I'm all for that.
We can accelerate communication back to the board and to the entire community.
Yes, we can. I think that's a good idea.
So, at a minimum, have something on there that says, "We're still working on it. There's a possibility," so that when parents look at it, that they know, and we call them, we can say, "It says right here," so that we're just not going through the surprise again.
I completely agree.
I can have that immediately.
Mrs. Nisi?
Because I can tell you, families are getting together over the holidays, making plans for next year, and they're also making plan, you know, they're just, until this gets worked out. So, without looking at the people in the back or anything, please get together and resolve this one issue so that in January, we have something on this one issue.
I'll speak to BFT tomorrow, and we'll set up a date. We'll see if we can get this done pronto, okay?
Thank you. Mrs. Belford?
Just two brief comments on the calendar. One, Dr. Blackburn, I just wanted to remind you of the suggestion that was made when we were visiting one of the schools and asked you to share that discussion with our calendar committee, in the event that that's something that we want to consider. It was, had to do with timing of the Thanksgiving break and the financial impact it has on the district because of substitute requirements, because people travel earlier in the week, and then also the impact that it has on our attendance rates. So, certainly something that needs more evaluation than just that discussion. I just didn't, I just wanted to remind you that there was going to be some follow-up on that discussion. And then with regard to the addition on the calendar or the disclaimer on the calendar, if I might suggest that what we put on there is if we maintain our current early-release Wednesdays, these are the dates that we are anticipating, starting, finishing, that sort of thing. If we do not, then the calendar may change, and that way, people understand that we are not doing away with early-release Wednesday. We're not making any determination on it officially yet, until that bargaining discussion takes place.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are now ready for staff report. Dr. Blackburn?
I would like to ask Ms. Stephanie Archer, Director of the Office of School Choice, to come up to provide us some information on the 2016 FSA test results in the school choice application process. Mrs. Archer?
I thank you for the opportunity to review some information regarding our entrance criteria with regard to Westshore and Edgewood. I did send you some information prior to tonight's meeting, just to give you the history regarding Edgewood and Westshore, being established as a college preparatory program with a rigorously paced curriculum, requiring senior projects for graduation as well as volunteer hours. As such, these schools have always had a minimum entrance criteria set forth so that we can ensure the success of our students when they're exposed to this demanding curriculum at this accelerated pace. Just again, so that the public understands that previously, we used a Level III on our FCAT. We had norm reference testing expectations for our private school students applying. We had an end-of-the-year report card that reflected a passing grade of C, and we had academic promotions since third grade. Due to some of the anomalies surrounding the FSA, the release and the timing, we made an adjustment last year and reverted back to an older FCAT score. This year, I know that is one of the board's concerns with the release. The release, and I have talked to Ms. Riley, Nada, Francis, excuse me, regarding the release of that, and there is a contract, and we are supposed to have those results by June. So, I know you look surprised. That is one of those things that we are counting on. I know that a parent referenced that this year's FSAs were released in the 50th percentile, being the mid-range score of above grade-level performance. Next year, we have been assured that they will return to the leveling as well, so there will be a Level 1 through 5, just as there were with our FCAT scores. We also, to ensure, tightened up the grades, we asked for As and Bs quarterly, because again, our students have a high expectation, high-performance requirements, and the rigorous, the, excuse me, regular academic promotion since third grade has not changed. I do know your concerns, and I just want to share some statistics. Mr. Fleming is here. Both of our principals of our choice schools did a little analysis with their FSAs this year. Edgewood analyzed their current students, who took last year's FSA, just to see where they fell out, but of course, that was delayed because we didn't get that till later. When Dr. Nguyen shared the statistical analysis, he found that 97% of his student body scored 50th percentile or higher, again reflecting on grade-level performance. These students are experiencing complete success on the campus of Edgewood. The 3% of the students who scored below the 50th percentile are struggling. They are not as successful, and they are experiencing maintaining passing grades. So, you questioned the validity, but it seems to be relative to what we currently see in the students. Mr. Fleming also, when I asked him, you know, what were his analysis, he decided to use the seventh graders, current seventh graders, and look at where they fell out as related to the 50th percentile. When he analyzed his students, he had 1.22% of his population equating to 13 students in his seventh-grade classroom scoring below 50th percentile. Of these 12 students who were performing grade, below grade level on that particular test, they too are struggling with the curriculum and the pacing. One student actually has withdrawn because of that. So, when we're looking at the hard data, we're finding that this hard data is a commensurate reflection of what is expected of the students. I know that one of your concerns is that, and that's why we tightened up the grades, you did not want one single test last year to keep a student from being admitted to Edgewood or Westshore. And I can stand here today and tell you that it is not the one single test score. We look at if there's an issue with a student's test score, what is the history of that child's performance? And so, we go back and we do look at that. We want our schools this year, but when they are talking about any potential denial of an entrance, and to determine if there were any possible anomalies. And if I can give you an example, we did have a student last year who did not make the cut score, but when we looked at his past history, he had glowing test results, great report cards. He had one test that he had a hard time with, and it turned out that he was very ill that day. But he, being the, you know, top-notch student that he was, insisted on attending school and taking the test. That's the singletary anomaly in which we overturned that denial, and he is now admitted into Westshore. I know one of the comments too was, or questions, had to do with sibling preference. Sibling preference has always been in place, that student who is a sibling must meet the category or the criteria of entrance. I can assure you that we will initiate the same appeals process before the parents do this year, because I know you do question whether or not that FSA is going to keep a number of our students out. But again, statistically, what Mr. Fleming and Dr. Nguyen found, that the majority of the students would not have been denied entrance. They did very well on the FSA. I know, Mr. Ziegler, you're looking at me. I have a question burning.
I'm looking for board member comments. Did I miss it, Nisi?
Okay, so, as I look at the admission requirements, if, in terms of the general mission, if these were boxes, every box would have to be checked, correct?
Yes.
What if one of them is an X? In other words, they didn't meet one of them?
Well, we would have to look at the whole child again. We would look at, if your students aren't achieving As and Bs on their report card, I would wonder about their ability to handle the rigor of Westshore and Edgewood. But is that the only thing? Is it one particular subject, and then where did they score on their FSA?
But they could have three of the four and possibly be out. Yes, just, yes or no?
Yes.
They could have two of the four and be out.
Yes, but keep in mind, we're gonna go back to historical data, so it's not the one-time shot. We'll look at that, and then we'll go back into their historical performance, whether it be FSA or report cards. Again, students of this caliber, and I'll speak to grades specifically, rarely see anything lower than an A or a B, simply because they are who they are and they strive for their personal best.
And I'm not trying to back you into a corner, but one of the comments in our email exchanges was your concern about you didn't want entrance to be subjective, and the fact that you just said it depends, given the history, does make it subjective, which is why you're hoping-
We're looking for hard data points. It's our hard data points that we don't have. We looked, as a team of people, looked at all of our options before going this direction. What other things could we look at? We couldn't use Bella, we couldn't use Fair, because again, some of the schools used it, some schools did not. There was not consistency among that. We even toyed with the idea of doing our own admissions test, but then again, who would vet that with its validity? And how much money would that cost us to develop it and then, again, administer it and score it? So, there were a variety of things that we looked at. The subjectivity comes in the report cards. You know, being an elementary school principal, you could walk into one classroom, and you have a teacher who's a very tough scorer. You walk into another one, and there's nobody in the classroom that doesn't have passing scores, even though you know they might be struggling because their test scores reflect that.
Just my concern with the FSA is you could have a student that was a straight-A student and regularly academic-promoted, had high teacher recommendations, but didn't do well on the FSA last year, or let's say this upcoming year, and that would, that could keep the child out of the program. Yes?
And we have an appeal process, which I said that we would start ourselves this year, rather than waiting for the parents to initiate it, in which case, if we were going to deny a student on that, we would look at their historical performance. That's what we're looking at. If historically, you have a student that struggles year after year after year, why would you want them in such an accelerated-paced program to experience difficulty?
But I'm just saying, if everything's good, but if everything's good, except their historical performance on a test, everything else is solid. It's just their historical performance on a test. Could that keep them out of the program?
Yes. And it's because, again, they will not have, they will not experience success, and I understand there's heartburn over that. These have been in place. So, my question then begets, how many parents whose students are already at Westshore or Edgewood aren't going to be upset with the fact that things are softened? What does that do to the integrity of our college preparatory program?
I just want to make sure I understand you. If all the other data on the student is that they're a solid-A student, the teachers recommend A, everything else is solid, and the only data that shows that they're iffy is a test, i.e. the FSA test that this board has said is, well, that I've said, is not valid, you will deny them entrance.
Yes. And we have the data that reflects that all of the students that are doing well in this program did not have any difficulty on the FSA. So, if we did not have that data, if that data reflected something completely different, then we would have to come back and revisit. Go ahead, Mrs. Ziegler.
That's, Dr. Blackburn, what I have an issue with is that-
If I can interject right now, I know Mrs. Henderson wants to leave, so I want to give her a quick moment to chime in if she has anything to say.
Just want to ask.
Mr. Fleming?
Fleming, thank you.
I've been called a lot worse.
I was gonna call you Nguyen, I'm sorry.
A lot worse.
Could you please, I mean, I know you guys did this as a team, and I'm not an educator. I certainly have opinions, and everyone knows that, but from your perspective, you're good with the recommendations that are here, and why?
One of the things that I'm very confident in as the principal is the appeals process. I'm not part of the appeals committee, so I have no bearing on their decision. But when they sit down, and like Stephanie said, they look at the whole child, recommendation letters, whether that child was sick when they took an assessment, historical performance of a child on a standardized assessment, that may go all the way back to third grade. And again, if that performance of that child was an anomaly in terms of that year, they will look favorably upon that appeal. So, you know, again, as far as those very few children who don't meet that criteria, and there will be very few, there's been very few every year. As far as FSA is concerned, we will now have two years of data, and that, the performance threshold levels, it's my understanding that those will be in place or recommended to the State Board of Education. They'll be in place by January. So, we'll at least have two years of FSA plus data before that to look at, as far as the appeals committee is concerned.
Other thing was, and I'm not sure that you corrected this or changed this, but it was if they got a C any nine weeks. Is that still in here?
Yes, it is currently. I haven't made any changes based on what's going to happen tonight.
And I gotta tell you that if overall, I mean, I could understand if the first nine weeks, the kid gets an A, and the second round, he gets an A, and third, he gets an A, and then fourth one, he gets a C. You know, you see a, you know, going down. But if the first nine weeks, they had a C, you know, a 79C, and ended up with a 95, they still ended up with a B for the semester, and then the next time, they were, it just seems to me that, because there's quite a range in the C, you know, 79 to the, I mean-
It's like the semester grades.
Yeah, I would, you know, unless the-
That's why we proposed changing that.
Okay. Because unless the teacher's saying, "I give five tests, and I'm gonna get rid of the anomaly," you know, maybe the C was the anomaly. We don't know, right? Get rid of that, and then they're only averaging four of the five tests that they give, then it would seem more fair to me, but to use all the tests that you're giving, and again, the kid has that one bad day, I just think that the semester grade, for me, seems better.
Mr. Craig?
So, since I asked you that specific question, first of all, I'll throw my two cents out about the FSA. The irony that our superintendent has come out, along with every superintendent in this state, and said that the FSA is invalid, and that we are going to use it because we did our own internal, and I understand the preservation of the program, but an internal small sample-size study does not validate the entire test, just does not do it. So, I don't, I don't accept that argument. My concern, though, is for those quarterly grades, and that was my specific question. I can't speak for Westshore, but I can tell you that the staff at Edgewood are telling parents that they are not allowed to even apply, and it is on our website, that you cannot apply. So, you can't even get into the process of challenging, because you can't even put an application in, according to our website and according to our staff. That's what the website's-
That's incorrect. You can't stop a parent from doing an application. Everything Westshore and Edgewood has done in a lottery format first. It is a contingency acceptance to then meet the criteria.
Okay, I'm telling you what, I'm telling you what the staff is- Okay, I'm telling you what, I'm telling you what the staff is telling us and what the website says. And when I asked you when that change was, you said you came, that the principals came up with it over the summer, and that you had not put that information out to the elementary school teachers and principals yet. So our feeder schools didn't even know that the process changed, didn't know that the qualifications had changed from a semester grade back to a quarterly grade. So possibly that one student that was at a 79.4, that they know they want to go to Edgewood, but maybe that teacher's like, I'm going to give him a C this time just to, you know, prop him, you know, motivate him to do better. They would have given him a B if they would have known that the policy had changed, I guarantee you, because those are subjective. And every curriculum is different at every school, just as you mentioned. Some teachers give more tests in that first quarter, some teachers give them later in the semester. That's just the way teachers are adjusting their curriculum, as well they should, because they're trying to make sure that by the end of the semester, those common standards are met, and that they are being graded accordingly. So to just throw out a change, first of all, that wasn't transmitted to the feeder schools that actually are providing the grades to make that decision, and then to hold every student accountable at the same level when they're not progressing at the same level and not getting the grades at the same level, just doesn't make a lot of sense. I think that the semester grades are exactly fine, and I think that our communication policy needs to be much better, because as much as you say that that's not true, it's happening. The staff at Edgewood is telling parents they are not allowed to apply.
I do not control what the staff at Edgewood says. I can tell you with great confidence, we do a lot of communicating with our principals, our guidance counselors, our website. We were on a delay this year because of the release of the FSA. We met as a team. Honestly, if we could have had all this resolved in July, I would have preferred that, but we couldn't do that. I did admit to the fact that I don't go back and train elementary principals, because we expect our principals to do that during parent orientation and such, and we publish it as soon as possible. The other thing I want to just mention to you, Mr. Craig, is that Miami, Duval, and Hillsborough are using standardized tests for admission criteria into their academies. I did some research yesterday, so I do know that that's all part of their application system. So you can say that all the superintendents have come out with these policies, that there's no validity to that, yet they still use that as an entrance criteria. So it's not just Brevard County that has an entrance criteria, these other counties use it as well.
Okay, and that's fine, and I'm glad you, that other counties use it. I really don't care about the other counties, I care about the kids in this county, and whether or not they have the best opportunity to succeed. And I don't think that either one of those policy changes are giving our students the best opportunity to succeed. I think there are better ways to do it.
Mrs. Belford?
Can you turn me on? In looking at the criteria, one of the things that I noticed, and the conversation that you and I had previously, is that FSA is just a part of the big picture of the student. But what I'm hearing tonight, it doesn't necessarily sound like it's just a part, that if that FSA score is not there, they're not going to be considered for admission, which is concerning to me. And I understand where you're coming from as far as making sure that the rigor of the coursework is something that the students can handle. But I have a couple of concerns with regard to a lack of alignment between what we're saying in one place and what we're saying in another place. I'm curious why, if we are looking at really a full picture, why for these two schools, we don't include an essay requirement, a guidance counselor recommendation, a teacher recommendation? Because I feel like that would give us more of a portfolio for the student. The other thing that I question is, if we allow norm reference testing for private school students, why do we not allow other norm reference testing for our students? And why do we have the stipulation that private school students can go to a tutoring center and take a norm reference test, but we don't allow our students to go to a tutoring center and take a norm reference test? We require them to use what is delivered in their school. With regard to the C grade, I have to agree with what the other board members stated in that I fear that we're pushing perfectionism, and the bottom line is no child is perfect. I think especially in sixth grade, teachers have a tendency to establish expectations, and so they start off the year tough, laying down those expectations. And the likelihood that a student is going to have a lower grade in the beginning of their sixth grade year than they would at the end of the year is pretty likely, I would think. As they learn those expectations, they get better grades. Same thing happens a lot of times in third grade, because it's the first time that they're getting letter grades, and so there's a realignment of expectations there. So I think we have to take that into account as well. On your recommendation, on the document that you sent out to us via email earlier, you actually have recommend reverting back to above C, which is not inclusive of C.
Yes, C.
So I just want to make sure...
Yes.
That we are on the same understanding of that. And I question, in looking at some of the policies of the other districts, one of the things that I noticed is they have a minimum GPA requirement, and some of them say that you can have no Fs, but they don't say that you can't have any C grades. And I wonder if that wouldn't be a better way for us to go. The other thing with regard to looking at the FSA scores, it seems to me that the FSA was a very different test than the FCAT. So to look at a student who took FCAT previously and is now taking FSA, and determine that if they scored in less than the 50th percentile, they're not going to be successful, I think is kind of a leap, because it's a whole new experience for the students. And I understand the data that you all have gathered at the local level. Mr. Fleming, I appreciate you going through the efforts to take a look at that data. I have some questions about the validity of it though, because you stated that for the students that are currently in the school, if they scored less than 50th percentile on the FSA, they did, they're not doing well academically. My question is, because of the admission criteria, how many students do we have that have good grades and might be doing well in your program, but didn't apply because they don't do well on standardized testing? And that is really a significant concern for me, because I also have been looking at the makeup of our choice programs. And this is, please understand, I'm not picking on any school, I just want to make sure that we are truly helping all of our students that are capable of being successful in those programs have that opportunity. But if you look at the minority makeup, West Shore is 30% minority, Edgewood is only 20% minority, compared to a district number of approximately 36, 37%. But what's even more concerning is when you look at the free and reduced lunch, West Shore is at 10%, and Edgewood is at 13%, and our district is at 46.25%. Why these numbers are important to me are because when you do research in the area of standardized test scores used for admission, we know that there's a significant amount of research that shows that there is some bias in standardized tests for minorities, for low income families. And although there's not a significant amount of research that looks specifically at admission requirements for choice programs in K through 12, there actually have been some very interesting studies that have looked at standardized testing for admission to college. One of the things that they have found is that more and more colleges are not taking standardized test scores for admission. What they are looking at is GPA, they're looking at essays, they're looking at recommendations. And when you remove that requirement of standardized testing, what you find is that you get a significant increase in the diversity of your students. So my concern is, by having this, in addition to all of the other concerns, by having this requirement, are we discouraging students from applying to this program that could be very, very successful? There was one college, and I'll be more than happy to share this information with you all, there was one study of 33 schools throughout the country, 123,000 students that they looked at at the college level, where colleges had done away with the requirement for standardized testing. And what they found was that there was virtually no difference between the graduation rate and the GPA of the students that were admitted with test scores, compared to the students that admitted, that were accepted without test scores. Because what they found was they had more students applying because they didn't have to worry about the test scores. So they had diversity in their program, but they didn't see that there was a difference in the students after the fact. Their graduation rate and their GPA had like .05% difference between the two, which I think is an important thing for us to consider in looking at those programs. They also found that the quality of the applicants went up, their diversity rate just at one school went from 31% students, from 21% students of color to 31% students of color. First generation learners in their family increased substantially. So I think, and I have said this previously, I feel like we're talking out both sides of our mouth by saying that we don't support the FSA, we don't support the accountability program, yet we are going to voluntarily impose this accountability on our students. But I think it's a bigger issue than that as well. I think we have to look at, are we truly doing the best for our students in the district, regardless of what they look like, where they come from, what their abilities are? And I'm not certain that we're achieving that currently.
So if I can address that, because I know Dr. Blackburn will do this in his strategic planning, one of the big things that we are discussing is the access and equitability to our choice programs. So a perfect example is the elimination of corridor busing has prohibited some of our students who can't get to the programs, therefore if they have no transportation, they're not going to bother to apply. So that is something that we are looking at, that I've been charged to look at, how can we enhance and expand our choice programs so that our students can get to all of these things? So I'm kind of backwards and all around some of the points that you brought up. I will also tell you that it would be humanly impossible for Mr. Fleming or Dr. Nguyen's very small team to handle a portfolio criteria like our international programs do, because essays, teacher recommendations, guidance counselors, recommendations, report cards, and test scores are still equated to the international programs, must be evaluated. And I believe Mr. Fleming experiences about 1,200 applications annually. And so that would be extremely taxing, as is, it's very hard for his staff just to go through the criteria that we currently have, set up the lottery, making sure that all this triplets or twins have lottery numbers that are same, or whatever the parents decide, that sibling preference comes into play, to make sure that everybody is treated fairly and equitably in the lottery. So, you know, we're not opposed to that, but they are not equipped to handle that. At this point in time, that would require numerous hours of effort on their part to do so. With the international programs, they receive maybe 55 to 70 applications, something far more manageable than 1,200 applications.
Mrs. Dacey, did you want to add anything before I let Dr. Blackburn? Dr. Blackburn? Are you okay? I'm sorry.
I just want to make one last comment, and then I will keep my mouth shut. I think for us to say that we are not going to look at the whole child because it's too labor intensive is criminal. I think if we need to provide additional support to those schools, if there's a way that we can somehow filter through, but to say that we're not going to look at those more qualitative measures of students, and we're going to rely on a test which is questionable with regard to validity, because it is easier for us to go through the number of applications, I just think sets the absolute wrong tone. And I personally would encourage that we provide additional resources during that time of application period, so that we can look at the entire student.
Mrs. Dacey?
And you wouldn't be looking at all 1,200, it would just be the ones...
I'm sorry, say again.
You wouldn't be looking at all 1,200, it's just the ones whose, literally whose number comes up, correct?
Right, but if you want, right, but you're still talking, how many in your seventh grade class?
175.
175, then...
Still grade levels as they, as they drop out from each grade level. Oftentimes we'll lose a lot of ninth grader, yeah, oftentimes we'll lose a cohort group of ninth graders that want to go back to their home high school to participate in activities like marching band and athletics that we don't necessarily have.
And just to comment on communication, when this came out to Mr. Fleming, I don't know if you got the phone calls, I did. I had parents calling me thinking, when you sent the email out about parent, I got an email with the new admission requirements that you had sent out from Edline that had this, and I had parents thinking that it was promotion requirements from one grade level to the next, and they thought their child wasn't going to be promoted at West Shore based on this requirement.
I wish they had called me, because again, I...
I just wanted to say that I had all kinds of miscommunications come out because of this. That's how I even knew this was even out there, was because of that particular email.
Dr. Blackburn?
There it is. That's what she's talking about.
There you are. Go ahead.
Wow. So I think, you know, the issues are so much bigger than even we're discussing here tonight. They're huge. First of all, just to remind everyone, we are in one of the highest performing school districts in the state, and we're actually talking about one of the highest performing schools in that state and across the country. So, you know, the board, all staff, all teachers, those kids, the community, I mean, everyone should be celebrating and congratulating the success so far. Where I'm kind of stealing time away from next week's conversation, but it's been referenced here tonight. We have phenomenal programs, my opinion, my findings so far, here in Brevard. But I do think we have an access and opportunity concern or gap that we should start to address. I think the conversation here this evening, if I could wave a magic wand, would be rich, very, very appropriate conversation to have in a workshop type setting prior to we send staff out to start executing, right? And that workshop setting would result in some type of official recommendation that I would bring with staff, that would be voted on and approved by the board, and then we would go out and execute that. When, so I think it was the last week in September, where the 67 superintendents and I, you know, gave the accountability assessment, system, primarily 2015 assessment, a vote of no confidence, for a variety of reasons. And we've all been pretty vocal, I've been pretty vocal, about articulating the challenges, the ineffectiveness of the current state accountability system, and, but not only pointing the finger at the state, but pointing the finger inward to see what if anything we were doing as a school district to exacerbate a system, a thinking, a feeling that we know to be, or feel to be ineffective. So we did that midstream, and it was referenced here tonight, eliminating those assessments. There were more assessments that we would have loved to eliminate, but they are currently connected to evaluation, and so there was a, there was a glass ceiling on elimination, but we hope to engage in conversation and find more opportunity there as well. Uses of those assessments is something that we do have to look inwardly and try to remedy, right? Now whether or not we have the opportunity midstream for 15, 16 to do that or not, that's up for additional conversation. If we don't have the opportunity to do that, there's a, there's a point, at least in my thinking, that I've been kind of holding on to, and I heard it discussed here this evening. So I just want to ask the question again. Given the state of flux we're in right now with state assessments, I mean, we should live in a state where we had some believability, and we relied on the assessment results we received from our state, but we don't. That's not our current situation. Given all that, if a student applies, I know we have gaps on who will apply, based on transportation, the rules that exist, et cetera, et cetera. Given that, if a student applies, and the only problem in that student's portfolio or academic picture is a 2015 FSA score that is below the current bar set, will that fact in and of itself keep that student out of this school?
We will use the 2016, and if we looked at the 2016, we would go back and also look at the 2015 to see what happened, and then look again at their FCAT as well. So again, we are looking for historical annual performance. If they struggle each and every year, the concern is they don't have the foundation of skills needed to be successful in this program. So I understand what you're saying, Dr. Blackburn, and so it's a yes but no scenario, because again, if we looked this year and they had a difficulty, but last year was stellar, then no, they, they would continue on into the admissions process.
So let me, I'm going to ask it again, I'm going to push for a yes or a no. Of the entire history academic profile of the student, if the only thing, the only thing in question is the result from the fifteen FSA, will that in and of itself keep that kid out of this process?
No, sir.
Okay.
Because we are, again, we'll look at everything, including past performance. I know I keep hanging my hat on that, my concern is report cards, well, we feel they're subjective.
Okay, that, all of that said, and I understand, all of that said, I'm still going to push us all to go back and have this workshop and make all of these decisions, many of these decisions.
Why would it be the only test score available, Ms. Neese?
Maybe the student moved, maybe they have been home, you know, sometimes students come in and it's the only test score available, I don't know, just, let's just say it's the only test score, or maybe last year's and this year's, let's just say there's no other test scores available.
I think then we would have to look carefully at how we would want to handle that, and if I can just make sure that you understand, there, in a group of students that applied to Westshore, there were only twelve total last year of all of the applicants that were made, made it through the lottery that didn't qualify. So we're not talking a large number of students. And I, I understand what you're saying. So we would have to look at everything. Our concern with recommendations might be canned form letters that don't give you a true and accurate picture, and we had all these discussions. So if you have suggestions, we're open to those suggestions. I, I like Dr. Blackburn's proposal in that we sit down and look at this, because as a team, we've looked at a variety of different ways to handle this. So this was not just an arbitrary decision and the easy one, it wasn't easy.
Why are, why are our students not allowed to take a norm reference test like a private school student?
Because, well, and private school students have a norm reference test, most of them come to us with their Iowa Basic, and then therefore we use that test. It's usually our homeschool students that may not have a test, and they're the ones who go to Huntington or Sylvan. Isn't that correct, Mr. Fleming, as a whole? Yeah. So our private school students can't take the Iowa and then revert to go in taking the SAT ten at Sylvan. It's at Iowa Basic, they must admit.
But if our parents said that they really don't think the current test on file here shows their, I mean, if they wanted to pay to go do that, why can't they?
That would be the next question, you're asking them to pay to go, and I don't know how much it costs to have Sylvan administer it, I have no idea.
I'm not asking them to, I'm saying if they said, I want to go do this.
You have an answer, a historical answer?
Well, you know, again, the question then becomes, is it fair for, you know, our public school students to take one assessment and allow the private school kids to take multiple assessments to get in? So we use the assessment coming in. You know, again, the committee, I think, is a good idea to reconvene that committee to discuss options, because it, with this FSA and the transition to it, it's been very difficult, you know, for, I know for the appeals committee as well.
The only thing I'm going to say, because you know, I'm a math person, I've taken statistics, and I know you want to hang your hat on what you said about your current students without a control group, without all the other variables in place, you know, saying this is what our current class is, it really doesn't tell you the whole picture. It really doesn't. So I'm just saying, I agree with what our other board member said, you know, yeah, that is what your current group says, but without a control group, without saying, you know, here's a group with below-level groups and so forth, you don't know if a group with lower test scores could have done just as well, too. So I just, I don't like using these FSA scores, I just, I really don't.
I think I'll chime in here. I don't have any objections to anything that was said. However, in a transition period of changing your criteria, I think we need to be a little more lenient. I think the comment about the whole child and what's in the best interest of the child needs to be considered, not a cold and hard, can they apply or can't they apply? I think that's pretty clear. We don't want anybody to feel incapable. Maybe there needs to be, if they apply and they don't look like they have the qualification that we set, that maybe there's a little deeper dive to figure out whether that student's going to have the ability. So I'm, being not a educator, I don't really have an answer to that, but I'm sure that staff and our superintendent, knowing the board's concerns, can better address that. But I also want to bring up a point that needs to start becoming evident here about our treasured choice programs, is that it seems that every time there's a concern, and I don't want, I hate to use the word attack, but it seems like we're all over our choice schools. It's corridor busing, it's discussing sibling preference, some of these, our choice schools are in older facilities, don't seem to be getting, you'd think that we'd be, we'd be putting all of our resources into enhancing these programs and making them better and more accessible in every way possible. I realize we did some of that in the past because of budget concerns, and I think we need to look at enriching all of this opportunity now that hopefully we're on the, coming out of all those, all of that, and do more, and then it didn't even consider the fact that all the manpower that goes into reviewing applications and contacting students, and it's, it's a, it's a lot more work than, obviously, than a regular high school, so I would assume that needs more resources. I'm hoping we provide them, I'm not sure we do now at this point in time. So we need to figure out what are those additional resources so that we can do this, as we like to say, with fidelity and fairly to all of those that we serve. As far as I'm concerned, unless another board member wants to chime in again, which you're welcome to, I think the point has been made, and that we need to revisit this.
You know, I think we need to give some direction because they're in application process.
Yes, ma'am.
We can't leave them hanging.
My, well, I can't, I don't feel capable of setting specifics, other than I think we need to be a little more lenient than cold and hard, and make sure that the information is, is consistent and clear to our community, which apparently it doesn't sound to be. And I'm going to have to look to Dr. Blackburn to resolve that, Mr. Craig, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I'm just, yeah, I'm confused, because I read the document that you sent, and I'm confused, and I go back to, you know, take the FSA out of it, I go back to the change to quarterly grades, and it said recommend reverting back to above C on all
That's a typo, I
So, but what is it that you're suggesting?
A C or above, it should be the reverse.
Okay.
It shouldn't say above a C, it should say C or above.
C or above?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so the, the thing that's on our website right now that I'm looking at that says, please read the following before proceeding?
I have not changed anything based on tonight's
What I'm saying is that, is that this is exactly what is on our website, and gives exact direction that doesn't, that it says, read the following before proceeding, student's final report card must be a B or higher each quarter, and it's either agree or cancel. So you either say, if you know your kid had a, had a C in that first quarter in one class, you can't hit agree.
Well, technically, you can hit agree, because what you're saying is you're reading it, I get that, but then if you're not, we're just trying to put forth the criteria so parents know what they're walking into. So if we require them to have, how many volunteer hours? Seventy-five? Seventy-five volunteer hours, and they have to meet that criteria, they need to know that's one of the expectations, that's in those agree buttons as well.
I understand, I'm just saying
So we're just trying to put everything forward so they understand what the expectations are, and those will all be clarified or fixed after tonight. I just didn't want to make any changes.
And that's all I was making a point, was we just, it needs to be upfront of, these are the expectations, we recognize that every child is, is an individual, and will be looked at as an individual.
And, Mr. Craig, in our defense, we've worked very hard on our website, and we have gone from a dissertation the parents did not read at all, and when we would point out to them, when they would call our office and disagree with us, we would say, oh, well, look at this paragraph, it very plainly says this information needs to be uploaded at time of application, they, you know, they just don't read it. And so we were trying to make it short and sweet with those agree buttons, this is what we need, this is what's expected, this is what has to be turned in, this is the criteria.
Okay, and now that I understand how it's going, I appreciate it, so thank you.
In that case, Dr. Blackburn?
Suggestion, one, and I just heard it alluded to, we need to just audit the existing communications to make sure it's consistent with what we talked about here today regarding the C, et cetera. We need to, we're in a transition phase right now, okay? In that transition phase, we need to make sure kids are protected. The primary point I think kids need protection from is if there's a problem with the two thousand fifteen FSA score. I think that's the primary
Two thousand sixteen.
Or the two
It's two thousand sixteen, sir, because we get the, we do a contingency
We're approving students right now for school year sixteen seventeen?
It's a contingency acceptance, it's a lottery first, or conditional acceptance, it's a lottery first, and then at the end of the year, because see, we're in this cycle right now, at the end of the year, they submit their report cards and their tests after we get them.
Okay, so we need a protection, interim protection for the two thousand sixteen score. Let me be explicit about this, to ensure that no kid is denied just because of the two thousand sixteen score.
I will work with both of the principals, and we will sit down and evaluate that.
So that's one, immediate protection, but then longer-term, bigger picture to bring back a complete set of recommended criteria for entrance into these programs.
Sounds good. However, you just, thank you for clarifying, two thousand and fifteen versus two thousand and sixteen, because then I got to ask the question, don't answer the question. How do you check off the box if you qualify, if you're not going to have the score until the future, and then you got people that are not applying based on a score they don't have anyways? Let's get that all cleared up. Mrs. Neese?
Because I don't have faith in the Florida Department of Education, I would also like a contingency plan of if everything falls to pieces and they don't get them in June, and we don't have the scores, and, you know, that could happen, so we need to have a backup plan. And I guess I want to keep the board updated on when these things are coming. I think what the board's frustration was, is we were the last ones on the list to hear about this, and maybe it would have been helpful to be more on the front end of this in the future, so if you could kind of keep us apprised, that would be helpful, too.
Well, and I apologize for that, this is a procedural change, not a policy change, or you would have been informed. So I do apologize for that.
Thank you. Okay, we are now at the Board Member Reports and Discussion Points section. In addition to discussion points, I request that board members please include any information requests to be placed on board assigned tasks during this time as well. Any board members have a pro, we'll start at this end with Mr. Craig.
All right, I'll make it quick, because that was a very good, robust discussion, and I appreciate the time that Ms. Archer put into it. Dr. Blackburn and I were fortunate enough to travel right before Thanksgiving to Cambridge Elementary and Coco Junior Senior High School for some visits with teachers and students, and it was, it was, it was a really fun day, I think we had a great time. Heard some great feedback from both schools, amazing what they're doing in their communities, and how involved the community is, both in the school and how the school is involved in the community. One of the things that I, that struck me, that I left with leaving Cambridge, was a discussion about fencing, and I know that there are some in the community that, that challenged the, the issue of utilizing money that was in the certex for security fencing. And, you know, that is a recommendation from our security professionals that are the Brevard County Sheriff's Office, and I think that they have made some very good security plans for each individual school, including fencing some areas that are there, but Cambridge, the principal there specifically mentioned the fencing as, as a huge deterrent to issues that happen in the community that don't spill over into the, into the schoolyard during the school day, and gave us some pretty good examples of how that fencing has helped them control and separate the students so they continue, continue to learn. So I appreciated that explanation and that use of, of an example. Coco High, we met with a bunch of teachers, and then we were, we ran into a young kid who's, a young man who's graduating early and going to Florida, CJ, I think is his name, going to play cornerback, I think, for, for University of Florida, so that was pretty neat, and of course, they were on their way to the, to the next game down in Miami. But fun just to kind of walk around the campus, see how things are going. And anyway, thanks for your time that day, Dr. Blackburn. The only thing about FSBA, our Florida School Board Association meetings that I'll, I'll kind of bring up is something that I told all the board about, but I specifically looked to Ms. Van Meter, because I think that there's some great example, and it's not, no tasker, it's just Osceola County's STEM bus was delivered to them last Monday. It is a partnership with local, and, well, I guess local business, Disney could be considered local business for them, but, and using Title I funds to secure the, a mobile STEM laboratory, which was nothing short of amazing. It literally just blows you away. The curriculum that was put into it, the features that are into it, it's driven to the fifth grade right now, but can be adapted to other students in other schools, and they're going to do community outreach, and have parent nights, and all that type of thing. And Dr. Blackburn and I had a pretty interesting discussion as we talked about that, well, STEM is awesome, and it's going to be around, and the only reason I say Ms. Van Meter is if you get a chance to take a look at it, or, you know, contact them to see, because they're doing some tours, I think, at UCF and some other places where they open up. If we can get some teachers over there, or get some resource teachers even to take a look at it, it would be fantastic, because they, I think it would spark a ton of imaginative processes. A lot of people may, can come up with some great ideas just by looking at that as a spark. But Dr. Blackburn and I started talking about, just that, you know, it, you know, we can even go further to taking, you know, we've, we've identified issues, we've identified facility issues, access issues to programs, and reversing the, the access issue to making it, you know, allowing us to bring that program to a school, or bring it to a community, or wherever the case may be, whether that's a vocational training, whether that's a, you know, STEM initiative, whether that's some other initiative, there is a true capability for us to leverage federal money and partnerships with the community that, that I think would really, really do us some great stead. So it, it was probably one of the highlights of that entire four days there in Tampa, was seeing that Osceola product, and I wish them well in it. So other than that, I think that's all I have to say.
Mrs. Belford?
I, too, had the opportunity to tour some schools with Dr. Blackburn. We visited Apollo Elementary, Titusville High School, Memes Elementary, and Madison Middle School. Two separate days we were out, and Dr. Blackburn got to do some target practice with the ROTC team who was doing a fundraiser for the, the school, what do they call it, turkey something? Turkey trot, turkey, turkey shot. So had a great time at all of the schools. We also had the opportunity to have lunch with the city manager and talk about some additional collaborative efforts to support the community and community support the schools, so looking forward to, to moving forward with those discussions. FSBA was, was good, I think we all came away with some valuable information. Expanding on that partnership discussion, tying with the Osceola STEM ban, there was a presentation from Lake County about their partnership with the hospital and the college to develop a health academy to meet the needs of, of the hospitals in, in Lake County to be able to have employees available to fill their positions. So lots of innovative solutions coming through, and I think that's pretty much all I have.
Mrs. Neese?
No, I think we covered all of ours. I was going to thank Mrs. Archer for the changes to the policies fifty-one twenty and seventy-one twenty, I thought those were great changes. And I know we don't normally talk about procedures so much, we do policy up here, but I think tonight was a good lesson for all, when the procedures impact so tonight was a good lesson for all, when the procedures impact so much, I think it's real helpful that the board has input on the front end, and I think there's less frustration on the end. FSBA I thought was good, probably my favorite speaker was the Vice President of Education of Apple. I was, you know, that was my favorite speaker, and some of the education initiatives that Apple is putting out there just was truly inspiring, and for all the same reasons that all of you have already said. So looking forward to next week, Dr. Blackburn. You have got us all excited about what to expect, so we're expecting great things.
Okay, that leaves me, and I don't have much, I just wanted to give a shout out to the Astronaut High School ROTC, who I ran into, again, I run into them all over the place, they're really out there supporting their community. This time, interesting, they were in South Pervad, supporting the Abate Toy Festival, which the Abate Toy Festival used to be the toy run, the annual, you know, Christmas toy run, where thousands of motorcyclists bring toys to donate to organizations who give toys to kids for Christmas. But the, it was a toy festival this year because they're not doing the run due to an accident that occurred last year, unfortunately, but the Astronaut High School ROTC was there in force, raising money for themselves, but they're also out there directing traffic and controlling entry to the event, and just really, and so when I bumped into kids raising money, I always like to ask them if they know what it's for, what's the money for, what do you use it for, tell me, talk to me about your program, and it's always great, and these kids really knew what was going on. And Dr. Blackburn and I talked about this a little earlier, because I was a little taken back when they said, oh, we use this even for things like uniforms and shoes, and I'm thinking to myself, is that not something that, that it's part of a course, I mean, or does the military, are they supposed to be supplying those items? Why are the kids out there raising things that are a core necessity of a curriculum program? And I don't have any answer to that, but I know that either we need to figure that out, or we need to help them reach out to the communities, because I believe that our communities would step up if it's not something that we can solve. So we're going to look into that and figure out why it is that way. But phenomenal job by those kids, very, very professional, very polite, and on the job 100% of the time. So congratulations to Astronaut High School ROTC for supporting your communities countywide. That's all I have. Go ahead.
I forgot to say that one of the reasons I'm not going to the Space Week thing on Friday is that Dr. Setti is letting me shadow her on Friday. We're going down to Palm Bay High School to do something with regards to the late test scores. What?
Cohort graduation.
Cohort graduation rate, so I'm going to learn what that is. So whatever that is, I'm doing that on Friday, so I'm following her, and I promised I'd buy her lunch afterwards, so looking forward to that on Friday.
Very nice. One more thing, I apologize, I had it written down, and it was part of the discussion on school, anything that we do regarding, because it is procedural, I'd like it to be run through legal as well. We need to make sure that we are following the procedural, the legal procedural issues to make sure that we are, you know, crossing or dotting our i's, crossing our t's. I asked Mr. Beislin, he has not been involved up to this point, so I'd like to make sure that at least he has some legal oversight as well. And the last thing is, is that, you know, the school next door here is playing in the state finals on Friday. So I think Mrs. Klein said that they are leaving at 12:50 or so, the buses are leaving on Friday for the Citrus Bowl, so best of luck to the Viera Hawks, and we're looking forward to bringing home the trophy. Okay, Dr. Blackburn?
I will actually be at that game on Friday. They're actually, Viera were playing my wife's alma mater for the state championship, so I've already promised that we are going to win and win big, like really big.
What side are y'all sitting on?
I'm sitting on the Viera side. St. Thomas is her alma mater, right? I'm going to speak directly and pretty explicitly to every employee, every parent, every community member around next Tuesday, December 15, 5:30 PM in this room. We have communicated, the Strategy Matters conversation in a variety of different ways, I know Jessica has written on it in Florida Today, we've emailed, we're on all forms of social media, et cetera, et cetera. That said, I know that there is still doubt on whether or not we will have a great level of participation, and a lot of presence here in this room. My challenge slash criticism is going to be, there is zero doubt in my mind that if this board and/or I made a decision here tonight or tomorrow that was thought to be of negative impact, there's no doubt in my mind that we would not fill this room at our next board meeting without any of the marketing efforts that we've put forth to bring people out and participate in the direction of this school district. Many of the items we've talked about here tonight, salary and benefits, respect and value of all people, reaching out to our municipalities and making sure that we are good neighbors, school choice, testing, assessment, many of those, if not all of them, will be represented in that strategic plan, and you will have a preview into the direction that we want to walk in. Without having the internal and external community here present to confirm that we're walking in the right direction for you as employees, teachers, staff, principals, faith-based communities, nonprofit, corporate, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, you just need, you need to be here. And yes, you can watch it from the comfort of your favorite place online, however, nothing communicates participation quite like physical participation. So hope to see you all here next Tuesday, 5:30 PM for a Strategy Matters conversation. Thank you.
Anything else to come before the board? In that case, meeting's adjourned.